So we'll start, I believe Heather's going to start with an icebreaker activity, or do you want to wait till we get to the retreat?
I want an icebreaker, I got lost.
Okay, alright, so we'll start with a bit of an icebreaker, then we'll get into the priorities, and then I'll speak to what Nicole had requested. We'll talk about how we did last spring, where we're at for this proposed fall, and then we can bust out our board here that kind of lays it out over the course of time, so you can see the rhythm of the work for the next semester. And then, and then we'll get into our emergency activities. So with that, I'll just go.
Lovely, thank you. So if we could just do a quick, go around, remind me who you are, how long you've been on the board, and what is your superpower, the weird thing that you're freakishly good at that other people aren't really good at? Well, I'll start to give you a minute to think. Hi, I'm Heather, I'm not on the board, but I've been working with you for ever. And my superpower is I can eat a drive-through salad in a moving vehicle and not get any of it on me.
Right.
Right? The dressing and everything, like I dress it up real good, too. I like a good bloody salad. I will take volunteers, we don't need to go in. Anyone ready? Yep.
I have a gift card, I'm on the list in 2023. One of the hard questions. I'd say my superpower is I am not as fascinated, but I love to run uphill really fast.
Love to do what?
Run uphill really fast.
Oh my god. I'm not abreast just thinking about it. I feel like a driver.
I can't even, I'm drinking, I'll be quick, I'm drinking a smoothie, finished, so happy. Missed the trash can, covered myself. And all I had to do was drop it in the trash.
Maybe that's also your superpower. I can make, I can get messy in any situation.
You can see my face.
Alright, here's next.
I'm Stacy, I've been on the board since 2019. The only thing that came to mind is that I can say the states alphabetically, and this actually came in TMB with my, professionally, I work for a higher ed policy, and we do state stuff all the time, and so the amount of times I've had to list the states alphabetically is two in any list, so it's not really, not really in handy. But did you learn this song, or did you just?
I learned this song when I- Because we lived in the United States from their universal colonies?
When I was in third grade, I sold, and I was in elementary school during the Viking period, and that was when that came. Anyway, it's really come in handy professionally, probably over 100 times.
Did you learn a song?
Yeah, shall we all sing it?
Arizona, Arkansas, California.
But I had to like make Frenchy.
Right.
And I just boom, I'm done, and like.
In high school, you know, they give you the blank map of the United States, and I'm like, fill that void, fill that void out. I just remember like to sing it, I'm singing the song, finding my states, and other people have like 15 states, they can't even come up with 50 states, let alone know where they are. Nebraska.
15 is the United States, it would be excellent.
I guess, from the universal colonies. Everybody else, again, concert maybe later if you're interested. Thank you, ma'am.
I'm Kitty Sergeant, I've been on the board since 2017, and I guess I have two superpowers. One, I can get tomato sauce on a white shirt every single time I wear it, even if I'm not eating anything to commit.
100% success, that's right.
And the other thing is I can precise the Greek alphabet.
Wow, that is, again, is there a song?
Alpha, beta, yep.
Alpha, beta, gamma, delta, epsilon, theta, eta, beta, iota, capital, I, U, M, K, R, Phi, Chi, Psi, Omega.
That was very technical.
We support the arts here. If you're watching, as you can see.
The E C group next door wants to know what's going on.
Thank you.
Very appropriate.
You're right, yeah. Alright, who next?
Lisa Sweeney-Bran, 2019, I've been thinking, I'm not, I'm not coming up with much other than being never not hungry.
Everybody here does. I appreciate Laura for finding ways to support that.
Awesome, I'll go.
Beth, isn't it, I joined the board in 2021. Um, I also like I have a fun superpower, I'm pretty good, weirdly enough, at knowing exactly what time it is. Like sometimes my husband will test me, he'll go, what, what time is it? I'll be like, 8:13.
Right, 8:13.
That was, that was not supposed to be an example of right now. I went up, I went, oh, yeah, it was really quite close. And I can wake up at the exact time I want to wake up without setting an alarm. Although, I would describe myself as a chronically five-minute late to the person, ironically. I guess it's my choice. I want her to know that people that tend to run late to things are optimists.
Because they're not good with the show. I'd like to know how that's one of the next, but okay.
But you know, it's because, I think it's because that you're optimistic you can get, get things done faster than they can.
Oh.
You're like, it's fine, I won't catch up, right? I'll, I need to know. You should assume.
10 bags of ambition and a five-pound bag, it's all gonna be fine, got it.
You can get all 43 things done in the morning before you have to be working.
I always thought that. Love it. Alright, thank you.
Okay, I'll go. My name's Sophia Rocha, I've been on the board since 2021 also. And I'm talking about a superpower, but I guess if you ask my kids, they'd say I can get the world's little countries, like in one or two guesses, to figure out the country shapes and know where they are.
Really?
They find that fascinating. And my girlfriends say that my superpower is being able to run half the area without training, and still beating them, so.
And they still like you. I think your superpower is having friends that still want to run these things with you.
That's, hey, well, that's way more difficult than the states.
Oh no. I mean, at first there's a song, it doesn't sound like it's a song. Without the song, I mean, I don't know about you, but without the song, I'm dead, I'm dead in the water, Stacy. Without the song, I got nothing.
I don't have to sing it anymore.
You know, really?
I can do it.
That, yeah, that is.
Be more.
Next.
Richard, I've been on the board since 2015, and I don't know if I have one superpower.
Can I be a volunteer?
Richard is on fire when he's in front of the crowd, especially of Spanish-speaking families. He can work the crowd, make them feel comfortable, make everybody feel comfortable.
That's about a must, Richard.
Richard, he gives you a mic and he puts you in front of a crowd and everything moves well.
And you can be on buildings that's.
Thanks a lot.
My superpower is having people compliment me.
You know how to say just the right things to folks to tell you what you're gonna say.
Does it hurt for you? Alright, good luck. Hi, I know you.
Hi, I'm Rob, and I've been here since 2018, starting my fifth year, hard to believe.
Wow.
My superpower is I can yodel.
Who, yodel?
Backstory behind that, when I was in fifth grade, fifth grade, there was a play at my school, The Sound of Music, and I was chosen to sing The Lonely Goat Hurts.
Wow.
And I still remember it, I won't be singing it today. If we go really south, maybe I'll, I'll give you some yodeling.
What would it, yeah, what would it do me for you to do that for us? What's the price?
Um, I don't know yet.
How's your noodle on that? I want to know the question.
Noodle on his yodel.
My kids think it's, my kids think it's the funniest thing, because it comes out of nowhere, I'll do that. And then I'll also, like, I really have like a, not surprising, very loud voice, so I can sing opera really loud, to embarrass them.
I would say I would do it to embarrass them.
My superpower is embarrassing my kids.
Well, everybody does that, right? That's just showing up as a parent.
You know, Rob, I think the goat hurts moms with my kids all the time, so maybe we need a salad show.
Are we talking about a duet?
Yes. I think we need a, a cabinet and more salad show.
I only go, I only go hurt lady, lady, lady. I got a new yodel in Spanish. Not yet, not yet.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Kathleen, I've been here since 2019. My superpower is I can do my makeup in the car without looking in a mirror.
Oh, that is amazing.
And it normally goes pretty well. I did have disastrous experience about a year ago. I color my hair, and so I have this root powder in my makeup bag. And I was driving to a meeting, this is Jack Robinson. And I'm driving down Colorado Avenue in Denver, and I do my whole makeup. Check it, right before I went in, I had rubbed this slapstick all over my entire face. I mean, just completely covered. And it's sticky, I just don't want to come off. And I had just cleaned my car, because it was the beginning of the school year, and I park at a school, and I didn't want staff to think I'm a mess. So the only thing I have in my car was one North Face glove. Just step off.
You can't go in here.
So what do you think?
I did, I got it on, and I went into the meeting and said we've resolved the case. But I've since learned, don't carry your root powder in your makeup bag.
I mean, that's advice for life right there. Laura?
I'm Laura, and I guess, oh, I've been with the board since December of 2015. And I guess my superpower, as the board members know, I am obnoxiously persistent.
I wouldn't say obnoxious.
I will stick with it until whatever it is needs to get done. Whether it's personal, whether it's work-related, I just find the four fourteeners, the Calibron Blues. And it was a long hike, and no, I would not rate Kathy up the hill either. She's one of the people that can do it in six hours, and it took me almost 12, so, anyway. But I was persistent.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you all very much for indulging me. Shall we talk a little bit about prioritization?
I think so. So we always start, oh, that's not gonna work. We always kind of start with our vision and mission to remind all of us on the governance team why we're here. I'm not gonna read those things. When I came in 2018, even after we started a new strategic plan, we decided to keep the vision and mission. And I don't think that that was a wise choice, and most true today. And I would think that as you look at prioritization topics and work we're doing, they're very much aligned to a division and mission approach. Same thing with values. Take a minute to read these. And then our long-term student comes from our Altogether for All Student Strategic Plan, Ignite, Equip, and Sort. I'm really proud of the progress we've made with the strategic plan, we'll talk a little bit about that in prioritization, and how common the knowledge of what we're trying to do is as we go out to schools. I do believe that at a very high level, folks are very in tune to the work we're doing, which is a challenge to know and understand what's happening. But as we, as we move forward, I do feel like as an organization, we're really rallying around these ideas. Alright, so we already did our check-in. So I wanted to review spring 2020. Let me just talk a little bit about the process that we use to kind of set what the priorities are prior to this meeting. I mean, ultimately, our priorities as a, as a team, as staff, never are finalized until we come out of the prioritization meeting. And I think over the years since I've been on the board, there's been times where consensus has reached pretty easily, and there were times where we had to have conversations on when and what was going to happen. I think that one of the strengths that Heather brings, and why she always joins us for these meetings, number one, she's super fun, right?
So fun!
To hang out with Heather, but also, if we get to a place where we're not getting consensus, she has strategies that she can leverage and utilize to get us to a place where we agree on the things that we speak to. Sometimes, sometimes we've had to do that, other times we haven't. I think as we've really kind of rallied around our strategic plan, and certainly within, you know, the pandemic, I just think that there was a lot of alignment. So that's really the process, there's not a formal calculation, it's more of a feel. We try to listen and try to understand what we feel like would be helpful for the board to know as we think about the rhythm of the work that's happening throughout the course of the year. And when we walk through the things that you shared with us in the spring, where I feel like they would fit in the course of work. There are things that we suggest that go back out to next semester, and then we always honor that and make sure that those things come back. So a little bit of a process, you know, we, we try to bring everybody together. If there's some disagreement, or you know, we want to talk about what it is we want to prioritize, this is what this meeting is for. So I think we did really well last spring, given everything that was going on, I would say that.
Wait, hold on one second. That answer your question about how we do it? Kind of? Yeah, no, I think it'll be interesting if there is like disagreement, making sure everyone's actually feeling like they're. Heard, yes.
Very good.
Sorry, dinner.
Yes.
If we're recording, and we have to have our microphone on for anyone here.
I'm looking at Randy, Laura, no one's, no.
Is the room mic?
I could actually interrupt it. The room mic's on, okay, thank you, that's a good question.
Okay, carry on, Rob.
Just, just to be safe, I will, I will mic up. So what I always try to do is, is kind of do a quick review of the priorities that we set the previous semester, and share out on how I felt like we did. If you look at the presentations, I think that we made presentations, either work sessions or presentations, on all topics. I have community school as a yellow, not because we didn't bring it to you and speak to you about the community school concept, it's just, I think, taking longer than I may have anticipated to get that to a place where the board could potentially weigh in on potential action. And so I put that as yellow, but you've heard, Sam presented, and so you've heard about it, but I would say it's just taking a little bit longer, given the engagement we're doing with community. At the last meeting, if you'll remember, we committed to really deepening our engagement with the community to hear about what they'd want out of a community school concept, given, you know, what we've learned about it. So it's just going a little bit slower. All other things we were able to bring to you, NHS requirements, we, we're, we're working on that right now. Bilingual programming, we're working on that, declining enrollment, ended up in a long-range planning committee, ERP, we have an update, worked on that, athletic review committee was a good update, GRAD Plus we're working on, special education update, early childhood education and update. And then some of the, the notes that Laura took as we went along, let us know that you want follow-up on some of these items. And so, again, it's, the, the last part of our meeting, the agenda setting, is where we take notes and how we drive the prioritization. And if there's something that comes up within the meeting as well, I know that Laura's been capturing and documenting that. Yes, Kathy?
Are we supposed to talk near the mic, or is the room mic on?
Use the mic.
Okay. So the question I have for clarity on this is two things. One is, when it gets brought up during agenda setting, what's the next step? And often it's send an RFI.
It can be.
It can be. So how would you take it from an RFI to working its way onto an agenda? Or if it doesn't go through RFI, how do you get from that to, in the, in the interim here, right? I mean, I get it when we're sitting here and we're planning, but things come up. So I don't know if we'll get that done today, but I, or I mean, this second, but I think before we close out, it would be good to agree on some kind of process on how we would deal with that.
So the way that I perceive this is that if a topic comes up, a topic of interest that needs more information to know and understand, if it's something the board can take action on or give direction to the board, an RFI is the right first step. It also ensures that all board members have the same information, so if we have a discussion, right, that all board members know and understand the exact same information, right? So for example, you know, the last example that, that is the last item on this first page, and, and these are the two pages of agenda-setting topics that came up over this past semester. And Laura keeps a running list of this. Laura, we post this publicly, right, we attach, do we attach this to the agenda still? Okay, but you keep a running list that's available at any point in time for board members if they want to know and understand to make sure that what they said was kind of attached in here. But the investigate free and reduce funding for school lunches, right, which was just more of a general idea, like, hey, we'd really want to make sure that all kids could have free lunch, but if there, if, if that's not possible, who's doing something differently? Could we raise the threshold, what are the pros and cons of that, right? So then Lisa put in an RFI, which we're responding to, and I think I added a little bit of depth to that to kind of give a sense of what's happening around the country and around the state, right? So that's a perfect example of, man, this would be really great if we could do that. Then staff goes and does a little investigating on what's happening and what's possible, and then we'll frame up, what you'll see is we'll frame this up for a work session for a board discussion, on what do we think about this, here's what other people are doing, what are our best hopes and dreams for what this could be, which would then give the board, give staff direction on what we need to do moving forward, understanding budget implications, so on so forth. So that's a good example of an RFI. So, and then what, something that Laura did this past year, which was good, is she took down the names of folks who either, either stated it or said, yeah, like, that's something I'm interested in as well. And then, what I've tried to do is go through and, and say, okay, so how, within the work of the district, will we try to integrate as many of these things as possible into our semester-long work plan, without overwhelming staff, without taking so much time that we take away from the core work of the district, which is the strategic plan, running, operating schools, you know, all the operations that comes along with that. So these are the topics that we had. There's two that I have not done anything with yet, I'm sorry, Kathy. These are both yours, but in any event, but I want to talk about those, right? So, because I think the celebration of tour and bond projects could be part of, you know, what we're doing as we, as we put the, the question on the ballot in November. And then I don't know when Student Voter Registration Awareness Week is, and I'm, I think it probably falls in the second semester, so my, my inkling would be that we would address that in, in spring of 2023. So the study of fees, oh, yes.
One thing I don't see here anywhere, and I'm wondering if it's just bundled in with the declining enrollment, and that is the discussion about open enrollment? We've talked about that many, many times, and I don't see that anywhere.
Yes.
That's in the declining enrollment discussion?
Well, the open enrollment will be within that long-range planning committee discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, and I don't think we separate that out, because I think it's integral to that process. Because we have, because it's come up multiple occasions, we know there's work that has to happen there, right? But it, but I think that that's something that we would want the community to weigh in on, given the fact that board, that the community takes advantage of it, you know, 33% of kids go to a school besides their own, that doesn't include how many apply for something and stay at the. Like, it's, it's, I think it would be wise to get the community's kind of input on that before we started to touch it, because if otherwise you touch it, you're gonna have to go back and engage the community anyways. But it is part of that long-range planning. So anything policy, so Kathleen, this is gonna be something new for the board. We are going to, at the beginning of the semester, have Kathleen talk a little bit, and she's talking about that next, next meeting, which is tomorrow, on, on what are the policies, what's the pace? What have we learned after working together for a couple of years on what's realistic, what isn't? You can do a lot more policy work than the fall, than in the spring. The spring, the workload for Kathleen just gets pretty intense and significant. At least that's the rhythm that we've seen. And so she's going to lay out for you, so if there's something like policy, like the study of fees, I know we had a conversation on the fees, how do you figure that out? And that's dictated by policy, right, so we'd want to study that policy. And so we're, the policy review will be in 2023. The stud, the fees come to the board for approval every spring. So what we would, I would propose, if the board was, was, was open, is that we would do some type of a work session or give the time for, either that or an elongated study session within a board meeting to say, okay, here's the policy, what do you like, what do you don't like? We could do some RFIs up before that, right? If you were wanting to say, hmm, what do other people do, how do we compare? We could respond to that, give the board information to give you, to give you what you would need to kind of think about that. We need to think about budget implications. If you start to change fees, then what, how does that implicate, you know, what are the, what are the implications to our budget? So in any event, that's kind of how we address that. Land acknowledgement's coming, and I'll show you the big board after we kind of go through this, that's coming for study and approval this fall. Lisa had asked about how we could incorporate This Is Not Who We Are into our curriculum. You know, the first step I think that we took was embedded into our school leadership retreat, where all of our principals, system principals had a chance to watch that, and so that's an ongoing conversation. I haven't directed anyone to do that, but they certainly are aware of it, and we gave access there. A work session on Grad, on Grad Plus that Kathy had mentioned after we gave the last Grad Plus presentation. We have one coming for you this fall, to give you an update on that. Again, anything in yellow, like, we still have to act on. Kathy had asked that we begin to really infuse students into the board meetings, and so Randy is working on that now, so we can begin that this semester. We're trying to think about what that would look like. And we'll be working with board members on, on what they might hope to see about that. But that's, that's on, on deck for this fall. Universal preschool update, we feel like we need this semester to really get our plan together. I think our team is really working, giving the new structures, the new oversight, the new universal preschool. We, we're working on what we feel like our response needs to be to that, and so we're not gonna be ready until the spring. A retreat, Beth had asked, hey, can we do a retreat? So there you go, this is, you know, that, that's today. We're gonna give the board a restorative justice update this semester, so you can, you can meet Janelle, you can understand the work we're doing, what it looks like, how we're thinking about restorative justice, and all, alternatives to suspension, how we're keeping kids in school, but we're addressing behaviors and issues. The free and reduced lunching, lunch conversation, we're gonna do an RFI, and then we're gonna follow that up with a work session this semester. Yes, Lisa?
Just to get back to that first one you mentioned, with the.
With the This Is Not Who We Are, I understand you haven't directed anyone to do it. Have we let folks know, or could we let folks know that anybody who wanted to incorporate it into a school or a classroom would be supported by the district in doing so?
So that's, that's what we really did in the, in the school leadership retreat. You know, we, you know, showing it to them. So I'm gonna follow up with our staff on kind of what the direction was in regards to, you know, does everybody have access? I don't know that we have access for everybody, if this has been made free, I'm not sure.
I don't know either, but I know that the folks who made the film had suggested they were interested in making sure that BDSM and SVBSD did have direct access to it, so I'm sure it's doable, and I'm just curious, like I said, I understand not directing folks to do it, but whether we could add to that, just that support element, that if somebody wants to incorporate it, they have the district's backing.
Yep, no, I think that the next conversation would be that, making sure they have the video, so.
We'll follow up later, thanks.
Okay, very good.
Rob, on that last line, and I'm on the one before, it dovetails a bit with Healthy School Meals for All Legislative Initiative, and I was just wondering if we could, it's different, but similar to the, like a scaled funding here immediately, and I wonder if that's something the board wants to discuss in tangent with.
Are you talking about taking action, yes, a resolution to support, yep. And I do think that, so yes, I mean, that, that would be a great action after that conversation, or even before that conversation. So for everybody, just Nicole is talking about, you know, as a board, do we pass a resolution supporting the ballot initiative? And I also think that there's conversation around, as folks ask us for support for whatever that might be, what are the rules to the road around the board weighing in or not weighing in through resolution? I think that that's just been, staff doesn't really have like a formula that we use, it's more of a feel. Would you say that's right, Kathleen, in regards to like drafting resolutions to allow the board to kind of speak up collectively on that? So, so yes, yes, I think that can be part of that. And I also think that we have to have, give the space for the board to have the discussion on how we do that.
Yeah, and being clear about financial implications and different things, but I know folks from EFA and Boulder County Public Health, people are wondering why, if we are, and why we have not yet taken a position on that.
I was just gonna say that I think we have to have that policy, not necessarily a policy written, but guidelines, because we're gonna get a lot of requests, and I think we have to be really careful that we stay in our lane and what we choose to endorse, and what we, while individually may endorse something, that the district may not want to weigh in on.
And I see Kathleen taking copious notes around as we think about tomorrow, making sure that that piece is in there. Okay, thanks, Nicole, that's good clarification. I keep, that's the wrong thing, okay. I keep, that's the wrong thing, okay. Follow-up, special education, I think that we need wait till the spring on that. I think that's the right rhythm, because we would have, be able to get some work done, and we'd be able to kind of look at where we're at with this proportionality and other things. Kitty had made two, I think, really great suggestions around policy, right? Changing the word citizen to community member, and I know Kathleen has, has been implementing that as we bring, as we bring policies forward, reviewing that as a kind of a filter. And then, and then we've done a lot of work in regards to gender pronouns, especially with our name tags, and then making sure that our policies reflect that. And so, this is an example of, something might come up, it might not be a work session on why we would do that, we may just change practice as, as a way moving forward.
So I have a question on that. Do we have to wait until a policy comes up for review in order to change the language that we use? Or can we say, we are going to change all of this and then just do it?
That was the reason that we adopted the resolution. So, we've had a staffing turnover in my office, but we have an amazing new assistant on board. So she is rolling through the policies and making the citizen to community member, and then the gender pronouns updates across all of our policies. And I think the resolution allows us to do that.
I thought we had done that.
Yes, we didn't.
Richard had brought up LGBTQ, LGBTQ references and social studies. I believe we passed a resolution, kind of stating our position, it'll be within our legislative priorities. I know the state board is acting on that this fall, so something for us to continue to pay attention to. Lisa?
I was just looking for that resolution and couldn't find it, which both, I think, means that our board docs is incredibly difficult to use, but if anybody could either send it, or at least tag the date on which we passed it, I wanted to confirm. I wasn't entirely clear, and I was talking to some other folks too, about whether we had passed it, or whether we had just discussed passing it, and then it hadn't occurred.
Lisa, I'm glad you said that, because I couldn't find it either.
That's, that's easy to fix, if we have not passed it? Easy to fix.
Well, just adding to, to the LGBTQ references and social studies, and I know that we've talked about what we do as a board as it relates to the Equity Council recommendations. And there've been a number of recommendations that I don't think that we've talked about it as a board, or do we have to talk about it as a board since it's your appointment of Equity Council? But I'm really interested to see where we're heading as it relates to some of the things that some of the students have done, like at Centaurus High School with ethnic studies, et cetera, because it aligns really well with, and also the content standards that are being developed right now as it relates to that particular subject, and, and the state law. So I'm, so I'm not sure whether we add more, or, or what we're doing as, as we're reviewing these agenda-setting topics.
Lisa, just one more, let me answer Richard's question. So we have a dinner with the Youth Equity Council on October 11th. Might be a great opportunity to reflect on their recommendations, what we've done and what works still in progress. We could give an update to the board then, if that works for everyone. Because I have to circle back with our team on, on where we are with the implementation of recommendations, but we already have that date established. That might be a good time to value our equity, Youth Equity Council, and then also inform the board at the same time, while we have dinner. What do folks think about that?
I, I, I think that's great, but, because we have the Youth Equity Council and we have the Equity Council.
Ah, yep, okay.
Can I just jump on with what he was saying? What Richard said made me wonder, and this might be work for today. I kind of hear a question in there about communication, like sort of that closing that loop of, they provide recommendations, and then how are we hearing them actively, right? Like, what does that look like? And so to me, that brings up a question of what does our communication cycle or procedure look like? Just want to throw that out there.
And I would tag on all of our groups that provide recommendations, SOCP, included, District Accountability Committee, DPC. Like, how are we elevating those recommendations, and how are we acting or not? And do we report back, and we do or do not, to those groups?
So, so, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I think it's also important to know that they are recommendations. So, some of them we may not choose to act on. And I just think that's important, to make sure that all of our groups know that they are recommendations, not mandates or directives, but they're recommendations. Many of them are fantastic, but there are some we may not choose to act on.
And that gets to communication too, right? Like, the way we communicate to them about expectations, I think.
Or when we don't, the why, because sometimes you don't understand why we, so.
So, here's, here's what I'd share. Today, we, I'm sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
Well, I don't even know if this is the right time, but just sort of in this group of things, we had discussed last year issues around gender-neutral restrooms, and we'd done a presentation on it. And I was under the impression that we had been making strides to improve the situation, and then we were approached by some folks the other day, some of our, our students at Boulder High, who were saying that nothing has changed. So sort of, in this category, I was wondering whether we could have an update on what's happening, what changes have been made, and what things we could do in the future, especially looking at some of these long-term facilities planning. And again, this may not be the right time, but.
I've, I've taken a note, let me, let me think. Let me share with you all kind of how this works today, right? So, as we meet with all of our groups and as they make recommendations, those are ongoing conversations, I think that, whether it's Equity Council, Youth Equity Council, District Accountability Committee, District Parent Council, POC, that, that there's an ongoing conversation on what they'd like to see and what they'd recommend that we do. And I think that those conversations typically, as those conversations are made to staff or to the board or to the district sometimes, not staff or board, that that's where the communication to those groups really happens, is within those meetings, right? Now, to the extent that we pile all those up, right, and engage the board on, this is what they recommended, this is what we did, or this is what we're in the process, I think we could talk about what would be the best way that that would make sense, right? You know, as, as staff, we're balancing a lot of opinions around what everybody thinks we should do. The most important opinions to me are yours, right, as the board, right? So, so as we think about the board work that we do, we think about the agenda setting, we think about the strategic plan, we think about, you know, my goals as a superintendent, first and foremost, that's where we're really focused. But what I think is really great is what you all are advocating for also aligns with a lot of these groups. So there's a lot of overlap. So, let me think about what would be the best way to circle back on some of these things with the understanding, right? And Stacy, I really appreciate you bringing up that point, that we have groups that are going to continuously push us on problems, and they're going to propose solutions. Now, those solutions may not solve the problems, or may create new problems that then we would have to work through. So, I think sometimes it's more of a, the conversation as it evolves, as opposed to, we're doing this, we're not doing this, we're doing this, we're not doing this. You know, for me, as a listener, I try to really get the spirit of what folks want, make sure that it's aligned to our strategy, right? Make sure that if they're good ideas, that I lift those up, embed those, and, and share those out. And if their ideas were maybe, I don't know that the solution is the right solution, it's a continued conversation to figure out what's the best way to solve the problem, as opposed to, we're not doing this. Because then, if we agree on the problems, and I do believe that we agree with most of our groups in the community on the problems, then we have to find the common ground for the solutions. And it's really unrealistic to think that people not in the, in the, the business of running schools or working in schools are going to be able to get all those solutions right the first time, right? But they certainly can identify problems. I've, I've found that within our community, when we listen, folks can dial in pretty well on the problems and the issues, and then it's working together to figure out solutions. So I'm hesitant to say, here's the groups, here's what they asked us to do, here's what we did, and here's what we didn't do. I'm more, I'm more, I think, I, I think it's a better strategy to really think about the issues, lift those up and, and articulate the things we are doing. And where we haven't, like, adopted or accepted recommendations on things, continue the conversation so we can continue to dig at the problem. I mean, and I'll just remind you all, and you all know this, the problems, right, that a lot of folks are, are lifting up, are problems that have been here for decades. They're also community-wide problems in addition to school-district problems. And so there's a lot of complication, which really, you know, speaks to the way that we approach stuff, right? We, we're embracing our community, when we're at our best, we're co-creating solutions, we're working together, there's an ongoing conversation. And there's also a tension, right? That there's a tension on, which I think is a healthy tension, because it continues to push us better, right? That even if we're doing stuff, and, and we've, we've seen this, we've certainly made tons of progress in the past five years, our conversations with a lot of the groups that are advising for us and activating our things are focused on the progress we haven't made. And that's good, right? And I accept that, and I embrace that, and I accept the responsibility. But getting us to come together collectively as a community to solve some of these issues, I think is, is, is what we try to do. But let me think about how I can talk to the board around, here's where we are, here's what folks have advised us of, and here's what, what we're focused on. Because ultimately, for us to really embrace a recommendation, then it has to sync and it can't conflict with other strategic initiatives that we've worked on, that the board has approved, and that we have really directed staff on, that we have to understand the runway that it takes to begin to start to unwind some of the issues we have, or start to implement solutions. So I appreciate the, the sentiment that, you know, that folks are wanting to know, did we do this, did we not do this? And I think for me, I focus on, well, here's the problems we're focused on fixing, here are the things that we're doing. I've heard what you said, this, I think, could be part of a solution, right? And this is something that we just have to continue to talk about. That was a very long answer, so I'm going to stop there and, and open it up for any comments.
Yes, it was a long answer, but it's a complicated question. I remember Laura giving us, oh, back in the spring, a list of all of the committees, or task force, or whatever we have, because we were trying to figure out what board representation would look like. And so I think, Rob, certainly want to give you runway to figure that out, but I get a sense of urgency to it too, because that's how we all stay on the same information, and I think it lessens the sense that if we can't be at a meeting, we aren't missing something, and it also gives our community a sense that they're being heard. So, I, I don't know what the answer is, because you're right, a lot of stuff comes at you or at the staff in these meetings, right? Because they don't see the picture like you do, so it's like, why didn't you fix this yesterday? It seems so simple to me, right? But I think if we could have some feedback on, and have another conversation, and you set the timeline, but, you know, sometime this fall semester, I think it would be really helpful. I mean, I'm seeing some nodding. And I leave that up to you, because I don't think there's going to be a silver bullet answer to this at all. So, and maybe a prioritization too of what we want to hear, I don't know. But I think we can have conversations, I think, thank you for raising this issue, I think it's really important.
So to give you an example of a complicated thing that seems really simple, and, and what it's taking us to make it happen. So, in the spring, we had a group come, El Paso came, to talk to us about the translation of draft IEPs to Spanish, right? We all would agree, wow, doesn't that make sense? And, and this is how things come to us, right? They come to us and they, gosh, that makes sense, let's make it happen. So then, you have to start to think about what it takes to do that one thing, right? This is just one thing, creating draft IEPs that we give to Spanish-speaking parents in their native language, so they can consider that information and bring that to the table as they're part of the IEP team, as an IEP is being revised, finalized, so on, so forth, right? So, for us, it takes two minutes to talk about, right? And then we give it to our team, then our team has to, A, rethink the way they do the work, because the way that we had been doing IEPs is we had been following the federal guidelines. We had staffed to the federal guidelines, and we had budgeted to the federal guidelines. So, that's what we had been following, right? Right or wrong, that's what we had been doing. So then the team says, okay, I'm going to have to translate every IEP twice, right? Because I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to translate it as a draft, and then I'm going to have to translate it again as a final, if there's any adjustments, right? So I've doubled the work of that team, right? One, one simple, common sense, fair, equitable idea. So then what does it take to do that? Well, then you have to find staff. Then, you know, the way that we have, we have scaled up interpretation and translation, luckily, Don has done a wonderful job, so today, we have the infrastructure to be able to handle that. Had that idea had come, and we hadn't been working on interpretation and translation, it would have taken us years to make that one simple idea happen, because you have to bring positions forward in the budget, you have to budget them. We already have a budget for this year, I can't be bringing you a bunch of new stuff in the budget, that's not how budgeting works, right? So either you have to add something at mid-year, or add something into the budget for the next year, right? So then, you know, this is contracted work, right? Because we have a system and a network of trusted translators, right? Remember, right, we've had issues with inaccurate interpretations, inaccurate translations, so you have to have quality control around this, right? Because you could translate them all, but if they're inaccurate, and you translate them, it defeats the purpose of doing the work in the first place, right? So, we talked, took this to the team, I said, you know, let's go, let's make this happen. Michelle Brenner and Don have been amazing. This summer, they've started the work, they've already spent $40,000, real dollars, and they will be coming, and they've already told us they're going to need another 50, right? And so then, this October, we're going to start small-scale, make sure our systems and processes work, and then go full district, but there will be a budget asked. So we've already are impeding on the budget for the 23, 24 school year. So, like, you know, to the extent that that's a really good example of a good, common sense, equitable, equitable idea that aligns to all of our values, it gives you a good sense that it'll take us about a year to implement, it's going to take $50,000 to implement, because we're fundamentally changing the work that we do better, we're improving, right? So, you add up 10, 15 recommendations from any one group, and then you multiply that up to five, times four or five groups, right? You know, so for us, this is what, and, and I think a conversation is, is, is definitely worthwhile, we can look at the board and try to, and, and figure out where we squeeze that in. But it's bringing together multiple ideas into solutions that are actionable, that we can afford, that we can implement. You know, we've got a lot of things, right, that we've been talking about, big things, and we also have to make sure that these new things don't conflict with the time and energy that it takes to investigate the old things that we're still working on. So, all of that is what a superintendent is charged to do, right? Like, so I take that responsibility very seriously, but it is also really complicated. But I do think a conversation, and these prioritization conversations help tremendously, because if we're going to investigate community schools, right, that's a really big thing, right? Long-range facility planning, and declining enrollment, oh, well, we haven't even gotten to where we're, so I'm sorry, these are last year's. In any event, well, we can fast forward to, let me, let me walk through this, but you'll see these things, and then the conversation will be of these things, right? Are there things that aren't a priority for the board? Because I build, I build each semester on your input to me. And I try to bring us all together in a way that makes, feels like everybody's been heard, everybody feels like they have a say, that nobody feels like they've been ignored, their priorities, their biggest priorities are embedded, that we're aligned. So, all that to say, yes, and, there's just, we just have to talk through the complexity.
So, I have one more question, I know we're trying to get on, but what you were saying reminded me, I think it would be incredibly helpful to have, have some of that rough budget estimate when we are making these priorities, because I think we all know we're in a state of, you know, in declining enrollment, where our, our resources are also being decreased as FRL, our Title I schools change over, we have fewer resources. And so how do we make all this work? And so having it like a rough estimate of how some, much, how much some of these items will cost, I think would be helpful, as we're trying to prioritize, like, okay, well, that return on investment doesn't seem huge, maybe we, that's not a big priority for us, because the cost is so great, and the, the, the impact on our students is relatively small. So, I think that information, for me at least, would be helpful as we're thinking about priorities and as issues come to the board, because it's easy to say yes to everything, because it all seems like a really pressing good idea, but how do we, do we have all the information to prioritize in a way that makes sense for the system?
So going back, agreed, but going back to the last situation that I discussed, right? Would we have changed our decision if we? Would we have changed our decision if we, you know, like, is there any amount of money that we would have to spend that would make us think that we shouldn't be translating the draft IEPs? And I couldn't have given you an estimate. And if I would have, it'd have been wildly wrong. So, I mean, you know, so yes, Nicole, right? Like, now, here's the good news, right? Like, I don't spend money we don't have, right? If there's something that's gonna have major budget implications, you'll see it, and you will be able to act on it. Like, so when we go to mid-year budget, right, you approve that, right? You approve our final budget, we will lift those things up, right? And the trick is, like, you don't want things to get so bogged down that we're not doing anything because we're worried about cost, like, there's an art and science to it. So, we don't, I don't have, like, if you look at our budget and the way that we're budgeted, we're budgeted at the central office incredibly tight, right? If there's anything new in addition to the general operations and things that we've been doing, right, that comes to the board for approval. So, so yes, I do think that that's an important part of the conversation, and as we move forward, a very important part of the conversation. I think for me, as we think about solving big problems that we think are worthy of solving, sometimes the budget is in hindsight, sometimes it's less, sometimes it's more. But we'll never implement long-term solutions without board approving additional budget and us balancing the budget with the priorities of the board.
So, Rob, have we communicated to the parents what the process has been for translating?
We have, we certainly have, we can do more. You know, we're working certainly to get that out. But we are still, understand that we're still in the process of developing the translation of the draft IEPs. We're not fully, like I said, we're gonna, in October, we're going to be focusing on our bilingual schools and translating all of the IEPs at those schools, they're our highest concentration of these IEPs that we'd be translating, and then scaling it out. So, again, we're still in the process of doing that. But once we have the solution fixed and we have everything approved, then we'll move forward and communicate.
Yeah, I just think that's really important, because, you know, from their perspective, how hard can it be? And then we tell them how hard it could be, and that will at least let them understand, one, we are doing something about it, and two, it's not as easy as one would think.
But I'd also say, and I know Kathy can speak, right? Like, it doesn't, in my experience, it doesn't matter how hard it is for us to do, we should do it.
I agree.
You know, when this information comes to us, right, people are pressuring us for something that's equitable, which is right, right? So we just have to be honest with people on what it takes to do it and give them progress along the way. But, I mean, you get into conversations of if it's too expensive or it's too hard to do, shouldn't you just do it anyways? And prior to, like, that's the challenge, like, that's the challenge we have as a governance team, right? To do the things that are right, to try to pace things, and I work really hard at this, to pace things in a way where folks can see progress, right? But again, like, this translation issue has been an issue here for decades, right? And so I think the celebration point is, we listened, we heard, we're doing something about it, right? And we're not there yet, and it's not as good as it needs to be, right? But it's the progress that I hope that we focus and celebrate. Kathy?
Two quick points. If we can get through this slide and then take a quick break, because it's coffee in the morning, and I think we could use a quick break. And second, we have to be willing to say, to Nicole's point, we're taking things off, because we, the plate isn't gonna be getting a whole lot bigger. So we need to, I think the budget is a good way to look at that, but we, as a board, need to be willing to say, because I haven't heard her say that, especially me, we're not gonna do that. I mean, we just need to be willing to have those harder conversations about what we just can't do, because everything is a good idea. I mean, I've never heard an idea that wasn't a great idea. So those are really hard conversations, and I appreciate you leading us through that. So if we can finish, does that work for you, Rob, for timing, if we get through?
Oh, absolutely, no, absolutely. This is really, really helpful conversation. I really appreciate folks' perspectives on this, and I really think that, I know Laura's taking notes, Kathleen's taking notes, I'm taking notes, that, you know, we're up for the challenge on trying to just give a better sense of where things are when. I think that we have lots of avenues to do that. So And we will talk about that when I go to the big board and I show everybody how this plays out and where the space and time is, and then that may be where we take something We talked about town halls, and so we started BVSD Connects. My assumption is we'll continue to do that, and I'd invite board members to join me in those. And, you know, last spring, it was really good, we did three. Felt like it gave folks an opportunity to come out, talk. We found that some communities were really good, just wanted to say hello. Some communities had very individual, specific issues, it'll let us dig into some of those. And then it also let us share information on the district. So we haven't scheduled those yet, Randy's in the process of scheduling those, but we'll do that. Nicole had a question on Policy IJ. Kitty, we need to talk about this board compensation. Kitty brought that up multiple times in the spring, and so I think I've found a place for us to at least have the conversation on that. Swap, which is a special education program, I would propose we put that in our special education update in spring 2023. More policies around IGDA, and then with the work with NHS and sports for procedures and practices, and, you know, policy review, that's in there for consideration. And then Richard, on multiple occasions, has really brought up this idea, what are the facility rental policies and procedures through community schools for our partners? And what are the rules to the road of that? I think that we owe that a conversation or an update and review. So we would, what I'd propose is we'd weave that into our strategic partnership update, which we could turn into a work session, which would allow us to have the conversation. So, all of that moves into this, this, why don't we take a 10-minute break, 5-minute break, and then we can come on back?
Yes, I was just wondering if there's an opportunity to add anything, or if we're just working with what we've got at this point?
Well, let me talk through where I'm at now, right? Again, this is all in pencil. I was just trying to make some adjustments, right? This is based on what I thought collectively we would want to speak to. If there's an adjustment, we can have a conversation. If the conversation feels not like consensus, we can implement a process on the fly if we need to. So these are the things, the big things, right? And I try to never do more than 15 things.
I love that you just did about right there. I thought it was three, five, 15.
Well, it's worked, it's just stood the test of time. We've done this, what, four, five, six semesters in a row, right? Now, I will say, just as a reminder, we also have a bond question that we're gonna be working on, which is really a lot of work. We also have schools getting back to normal, so this is in addition to all of that. So what I would do is I could, I could talk you through, if you will give me the opportunity, I'll talk you through all of this, I'll talk you through what I think the board's role and staff's role is with each of these, I'll talk you to the, take you to the board and see how we've laid this out, then we can come back to this, and if we wanna add stuff, right, we can look at the board and look at what that's going to look like, and then we can have a conversation on whether we need to delay something, take something off, whatever the board would want to do. But if we get into, like, I'd love to be able to present that first, if that's okay with the board. Here are the things, right? Some of this is normal, just the rhythm of work that we do every fall, right? What are those things, right? Budget process, strategic plan metrics, we have to get a rhythm because of this, we have to report out to the community where those are. Remember, we've made a dashboard live this month, right? We have to talk through that. Meetings with other city councils, I think is up for discussion. If we wouldn't wanna do that this semester, that might give us some other time to do some more work sessions. The CMAS PSAT SAT results, it's every fall, we do that every fall. Legislative priorities, we have to spend time on that, we typically do a work session and then several study sessions. We have to update you on strategic plans, so I have that in there. I think we're gonna talk about MTSS, I know folks want to talk about academic return on investment, there's a few things that you all have asked multiple times, so I feel like we need to do that. And then the new thing that I've heard that you want to hear about, restorative justice, what are we doing, how are we working that? Who you haven't mentioned now, she's our restorative justice coordinator, and I feel like that would be very time well spent. The community school concept, right, we're doing work, we could potentially kick that out to the spring if you wanted to make some room. Free reduced lunch discussion, it feels like it's timely because of the ballot initiative, you know, because it's gonna be on the ballot in November. It feels like you gotta do that now if you're gonna have a meaningful conversation on that, and that becomes part of that. The land acknowledgement, folks are waiting, right? We don't wanna delay this out anymore, we wanna bring that to you all. Bilingual education, we can kick that to the spring, but we really feel like we need to inform the board and our community on the work we're doing, right? Which, oh, by the way, is a whole slew of other new work that we're trying to figure out, that might have budget implications, most likely will have budget implications, so you gotta talk about it this fall. The ERP, I don't have to talk about the ERP, I think it'd be a good idea, it has nothing, it's not all great, and I think you have to be honest about that. I think there have been some improvements and there's certainly some challenges, right? And our employees have felt the challenges. I just think that, you know, whenever we're going through something and it's not great, I just think it's good to talk about it, right? Because otherwise, you'll start to get questions, and then you'll ask me, what's going on with the ERP? Right? So that's why I have that there. Brad Plus, I think is one of our most exciting initiatives, I'd love to give you an update on that. Long-range planning committee, that is a really big piece of work. Again, we're taking on so bond bilingual long-range planning committee, we put the wheels in motion on those things, right? And so Rob really feels like, and when we presented, we said we'd be giving updates to the public, we feel like we have to do that. And then the strategic partnerships update lets you know where that work is, and then to weave in that conversation that we've talked about in the prioritization in regards to facility rentals, you know, when you're a partner, how does that work, how do MOUs work versus just partners, songs of.
Just to clarify, the declining enrollment conversation is now the long-range planning update? Is that correct?
So, so we have, yeah, so we have the conversations around declining enrollment. What we decided together as a group is, the first step in addressing declining enrollment is to put together a long-range planning committee, which you, the members, will be on the agenda for tomorrow's board meeting. With the idea that for a year, we're going to work with this group, they're gonna study, they're gonna make some recommendations and get some information, and we need to report out to the board what's happening in those meetings and to the public.
Okay. Then the other question I have is, where does follow-up for the previous priorities show up? Is that, like, for example, you mentioned that the whole National Honor Society thing is in motion, so that was on the previous priorities, it's not in this priority, so I just wonder where it shows up?
That's gonna show up in the spring, right? It's gonna take us a year.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Lisa?
Not a question, but feedback. With the city council issue, I guess I'll just say what I think, every time this comes up, because I really don't find these valuable on Zoom. I think they're useful things when we get to connect in person with folks and have the opportunities to discuss all sorts of things, so whether we do it now or later, it doesn't matter to me, but at least for our big Boulder Louisville Lafayette room field, if we can't do these in person, I feel like they're usefulness is low for me.
Nobody likes the Zoom? Yeah, maybe.
You don't build relationships over Zoom, just back. Okay. So does that mean we're gonna do it or do we wanna?
Let me go through.
Just was wondering what's next.
What it means is I don't care if we do it in the fall or in the spring. Like, I don't have a feeling for when it should happen, but if we're going to do it, and whenever we do it, I would prefer it be at a time when it can be in person, otherwise I don't, from my perspective, I don't care if we do it at all. And if we do it in person and doing it in spring, right, in the fall, it's fine.
And I'm seeing head nods around the table. Does that sound like the direction we need, Laura, for that? Because that may, right? Because the challenge with those is that we've got to coordinate, so, okay, but that's one superpower, so we're fine. Okay, so here, as a reminder, board members, what I like to do, and this is based on feedback that you all gave me, like, what's our role in this, Rob? What's staff's role so we can prepare as we think about moving into these conversations? So I've proposed that, given the topics, given what I've heard. And then again, after that, we'll come back to this, we'll go look at the board, and then we can have further conversation and then potential, if we have to do some other work to prioritize. So around restorative justice, we're gonna give you an update on all the work that's happened and kind of the work that's planned, and then you would just learn about the topic and give us feedback, hey, this is great, gosh, we'd love to hear more about this.
Thank you for the work, you can't read.
Yeah.
Thank you. You don't have the superpower of reading deeper.
You can't read through my board, okay? Budget process, you know, we provide you multiple updates, we try to be incredibly transparent, and then you will be, you know, understanding the process, providing feedback, and we approve the budget hopefully in June of 2023. Metrics, we're gonna give you an update on the metrics, you're gonna ask questions and understand the data that's gonna help us inform other decision-making, right? And that's another thing, right? You could look at the metrics and say, oh my gosh, the metrics are saying this, why aren't we focusing on this? And we'll have to come back to this conversation.
And the intention is that will be in the fall and in the spring, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's a rhythm, that's a rhythm, right? Community school concept, right? You know, the idea is we would bring this to you all, right now it's tentatively November, remember, we're trying to do some community engagement, this is something else we could put off to the spring, this is more of a long-range project. Only worry about if you put it back in the spring is that you might miss the budget cycle, depending on where that goes. Other city councils, we've talked about this, right? Free reduced lunch, you know, discussion, we're gonna try to get background on this topic and give you all the space to have the discussion, right? I mean, I think that's the, that's the direction, and then you will learn, discuss, and give us, give us direction on what would be the next steps that the board would hopefully would take on this. And, or you all as a board might want to take, right? You might want to pass a resolution supporting, you know, like, Paul has suggested, or something. Land acknowledgement, right? So we're gonna provide you a draft, you'll look at the draft, make any adjustments, study action this fall. Bilingual education, we're gonna give you an update on the progress, learn about it, ask questions, give us feedback, let us know how you feel like the process is going. CMAS, we'll present the information, you'll learn, ask questions, better understanding. ERP, give you an update on the challenges and the improvements, you can ask us questions as we move forward, and if there's anything that you'd want us to investigate or talk more about, it might create a follow-up conversation. Legislative priorities, we help facilitate, we give you your old legislative priorities, we have a focus discussion, you all study action, study maybe multiple times, depending upon what you're trying to get in there.
Can we ask questions that you're going on or shall we wait?
Yeah, need to ask questions.
On legislative priorities, I think something that we should consider talking about is the state assessment process. I've been reading in terms of what's going on in ASV14, and I agree wholeheartedly with what Joe Salazar said, that the assessment process is another racist process.
We can talk about that, we can make that a priority, and I do think that's timely, Richard, because accountability is gonna be coming up, right? The opportunity to adjust accountabilities within the next 12 months, I think because we have that audit that's gonna be coming back, they're gonna be looking at the findings, and I really think the entire public is gonna be looking at what's happening in 14, right? The board, maybe, maybe the state board needs more moves, right? They feel like they're backed in a corner with some of the things that they're doing, so how do you think about that and make that more equitable? Understanding there's federal requirements that you have to meet in regards to high-stakes testing, but it could be, we have federal policy implications, legislative priorities that's advocated for federal.
Just another quick thing, it also goes along in terms of what the district is doing in terms of the overall assessment processes that we've been talking about for a while, and we need an update on that.
Sure, absolutely. Grad Plus, you know, we'll speak to that, you'll ask questions, deepen your understanding on what the work's happening, what the next steps are, so you can communicate that to stakeholders and have a better understanding of yourself.
GPS is borrowing your ideas.
They are?
That's our new strategic plan.
Is what, Grad Plus? You're welcome.
You're fine, you're fine.
Yeah, we'll just send them a consulting.
Thirty years too late for some people, but whatever.
These aren't my original idea, I mean, you understand, like, these are like big ideas that are like, you know, and like I shared with you, Grad Plus, the term isn't even ours, I borrowed it from a couple of folks that I've talked to that are on the other coast. But, but what we're doing is deeper and more equitable than just a college predator who is a military.
Perfect, thank you.
I think it's great. I think it's great.
See, we all agree.
Yes.
Well, so, all right.
Yes.
Long-range facility planning, gotta let you know what's going on with that, right? So we just give you progress, you know, um, and, and have a presentation on that, strategic We'll dig into the partnerships and dig into the facility use as a conversation, and then you'll learn top, about topic and give us feedback, direction, and it may, it may have some changes in policy application or not, depending upon the conversation. So, that's kind of what we have cooked up. Let me let you know how I scope this out over time to make sense. Now you don't have to look at the board, you look at this.
I love that anyone can read that.
What?
I love that anyone can read that.
All right, so we are here, right? So we've got dinner with new leaders, so tomorrow, all of our new leaders, there's a new kind of thing, that they'll all join us for dinner before the board meeting, so you can get to meet folks, say hello. Kathleen's gonna present her work policy, like, here's what we wanna do with policy and the review for the year, you can feedback, we can change, remember, this, these are boards, the board's policies. Any policies we need you to think about or adjust based on the work we're doing, if the district will let you know. And then Kathleen's challenge is try to find a rhythm and predict the policies you'd wanna touch this year based on the work we're doing, and then the conversation and prioritization. Uh, then, we'll do our back-to-school, we're not doing any ERP updates, Rob.
Is that part of the back-to-school?
No, I don't think so. That's why it's on a Monday.
I know, but you have to stand alone today.
Yeah. So back-to-school presentation, we, I mean, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about the ERP as part of our back-to-school, we've had some hiring issues, that's a world issues, we're working on getting those ironed out. And then, as a reminder, work session, green, except for the ones that I'm moving, that might be orange or yellow. Information typically orange, and I'll clean this up after the meeting, um, and then act, study and action, right? You try to go study action, study action. So, again, this is kind of what rounds us. Uh, next, September 13, I have for work session, DAC exec planning, right? Every semester, DAC comes, and you ask the DAC what you want them to dig in on. I thought we could put the free reduced lunch conversation here, that doesn't take, I mean, staff time is almost already there, so this is good, um, to give you all the opportunity for discussion. We're gonna get an update on the critical needs list, update on the election process, and then CMAS, PFCT, SAT, which is timely because that information's out now, so we need to get that there. September 20th, budget development process, legislative planning, that's just a work session, remember, blue work session, red board, I mean, no, blue work session, black meeting, red retreat, but we couldn't, didn't wanna erase the board, so this is today. All right, so this is happening. September 20th, September 27, land acknowledgement, ERP update. October 11, Youth Equity Council Dinner, we wanna give you, wait till October to give you our teacher of color hiring update, to give you a better synopsis on what happened, what worked well, what didn't work well, what we're planning to do this coming year. I think we did some really good things, and I think we learned some real valuable lessons going through that process, because I do not believe that the percentage of teachers of color are going to increase significantly this year based on early indicators of what I've seen. No, none of us are okay with that, we're assessing it, but we wanna give James until October to talk to you about that. And then we wanna talk, when we talk about that, like, teacher induction pipeline, like, what are some of the strategies we're doing? We had a lot of conversations in the spring about kind of the concurrent enrollment programs that we have to prepare, like, new teacher pathways, so we wanna work that into that conversation. Um, school performance frameworks is gonna be out in October, we think, and we'll give you an update on strategic plan. Uh, and this is where we'll go s- action, if we, if we get where we need to, we go to action, if not, we'll go study action there. Uh, October 18th, metrics, another budget presentation.
Yes.
Okay. October 25th, partnerships, restorative justice. November 8th, we have dyslexia update, which we didn't have up there, if you wanted that, or that may be some, a, a space where we could potentially change. Long-range advisory council, grad plus update. November 15th, return on investment is the strategic plan update, community school project, and then maybe we move this work session paying board members, if you all wanna discuss that, we need to talk about that, so we can put that there. Then we have CASB, and then I, I have a placeholder for budget, enrollment update, and then a bilingual ed update on the 13th, and then, then we're into the next semester, so I just place holders here. But that's kind of the way that it works, just to remind you, if we don't wanna be meeting till 10:00 at night, uh, one to two work sessions, one to two information items. October 11th is stacked up to be a long meeting right now, um, and we can adjust and shift, and there will be some slight adjustments, shifts, just based on the rhythm of the work, right? And we kinda notify you all when those things happen. Laura?
October 11, we do dinner with Youth Equity Council, presuming that starts at 5:00. We will have to entertain possibly starting our meeting later.
This is one thing, it has two, two magnets, but one thing.
Okay. What are those things again?
It's, it's the teacher of color hiring update, and then what are we doing for teacher induction pipeline as we begin to try to diversify?
So we could do that in 30 minutes?
Well, pardon? Okay. Is that, that's what I'm probably doing.
Probably not, I mean, probably not, so.
Rob, can you go back to September 13? The reason I'm asking is because I'm going to have to.
Okay. Do you wanna know what's on there?
Yeah. DAC exec, free reduced lunch conversation, critical needs list, CMAS, PSAT, SAT.
I'm talking about.
I think, so, can we talk about the 8th, because we're trying to keep that short meeting with election night? So, my sense, when I'm a little bit kitty, is we don't have to decide board number today because we can't do it for us anyway, so could we move that to the spring, a work session on that?
Sure. I just wanna talk about it so we understand it well before the next board election.
Yeah.
I think it, I, I would, I would maybe suggest that we have a conversation about pay actually still in the fall, because, only because I know that in the spring, we're gonna be having lots of conversations about contracts and pay, and, but, I just, it feels like that optically isn't like something you wanna be talking about in the spring. That's my thought.
Now, it's because we can't move the coordinating, and we need to be done, we can't, for people to go and get what, could you put it something like that?
Why don't we tentatively put this for January 10th?
About first thing.
That gets you ahead of what you're talking about.
Two of them, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, we could put that there.
Yeah, and also, if, I wanna have it done in time for people who are thinking about running, because, I mean, my whole idea about paying the board is making it possible for people who cannot afford to volunteer. And I don't know what we can pay, 'cause I don't know the law yet. No, I know it's not much, but it's still, I want to understand it so potential candidates will understand.
We should have an RF, maybe we have one, I don't know, we should have an RFI about that before that conversation.
I think we could send a new video. But we'll, we'll dred that out, we'll check that out. Other questions or suggestions related to the work plan for the fall?
I just put it in pending. So these are the things we'll probably have to talk about next semester, right? I want to make sure that we update the board on dyslexia in the community, because the work we're doing is really impressive, and I wanna look that up. Uh, food services update, you'll probably want that in the spring, any just, um, requirements, we have a follow-up that's just gonna take us from you get there. Uh, and I don't have everything on, these are just the magnets that were here, and then I'll add everything else that we said before we go to the spring here as well, then we'll have that kind of situated.
So this gets back to my adding, and we've had multiple conversations about, um, our math opportunities and the inequities that exist across our district system-wide, also relates to our CMAS scores, which are not looking pretty for math, and our 7th, 9th, and 11th graders, and how are, when are we gonna be able to tackle math pathways and curriculum so all of our kids have the same opportunities, no matter what school they attend?
We can talk about that in a call on October 11th, because I think that aligns with MTSS as you think about meeting the individual needs and acceleration. So that's where I would see that happen.
Rob, go ahead. There's so many things in pending, and there is the 27th month of life.
Which one?
September 27th.
Well, uh, no. Wait, we can do, like, I, I, I do, like, like, when I lay this all out, I also know we're gonna have a conversation, and there's some moving and shifting and adjustment, so I think that's an open space for a work session if we wanna take advantage of it.
And land acknowledgement is gonna be like 10 minutes, right? And then we've got ERP, so it looks like that's an hour's worth of meetings on that day. I think that's really interesting.
All right, so.
Oh, did you wanna suggest something for that spot, or just call it out?
I know, I mean, I'm not sure what feels most important, that it goes pending, I'm just saying it feels like we should be doing more on that day, that, that's it, we wanna pass them, we don't have on.
I mean, it might be a follow-up to legislative planning, I mean, it could be a legislative plan.
That's here from Kathy, and then from others.
Could you put the, um, dyslexia there, or is that gonna be too soon?
Yeah, it's too soon.
And then, Rob, I don't think MTSS addresses all the issues around math, so I think we need to have a deeper conversation, 'cause.
It's a strategic plan update, so just.
But, but we wanna, so it's deeper than just what are we doing for MTSS for students, it's curriculum, it's why do our scores look so bad, it's a much deeper dive, so I don't know how you wanna put that in or where you wanna put that in, but what I'm hearing and experiencing is it's a little deeper than what are we doing there, so I think that's a good start, but I think we need to figure out how we can, if it's an RTI, if it's, I don't know, but it's a deeper conversation than that.
So, MTSS is a big strategy we're rolling out this year, that is a big part of meeting the individual needs that allows directly into growth and achievement, right? One done well, we've done MTSS in this history, not well, not consistently, for a long time, and all you have to do is look at our X, right? So now, we have MTSS as a topic, but due to Nicole's point, acceleration is an important topic as well, because it's part of our metrics. And so the idea that I have to work with the team on this is giving a strategic plan update, what I'm hearing you say on the strategic plan, wanna know and understand how MTSS, massive acceleration pathways, instructional infrastructure are going to support our goals within the metrics and the plan, right? So just don't, this is, this is, like, I'm, I'm not even sure why that says MTSS, I know that's one of the things, but it's just not MTSS. We can broaden that out, and it'll fit, it'll, it'll fit well, because we're gonna talk about the frameworks, right? So we'll be talking about the strengths and opportunities there, and then how does the strategic plan support that? I think that those things are pretty.
My, my only thing was, I was gonna ask you to read what's on pending, but also, as you're talking, I'm wondering, is there a way, I think all of us feel like declining enrollment, and the way we're addressing that is a super big priority, um, is there some way to, I don't know, September 27th is pretty early, but is there some way to, like, get some information about that?
Yeah, no, no, that's it, it's November 8.
Oh, it's November 8, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that's right, that's there. And you've gotta get them some time to meet and talk and discuss, so, yeah, yeah, so.
Could you read what's over there in pending, though, please?
Food services update, dyslexia update, NHS requirement, long-range advisory committee update for February, super tense evaluation, free limit budget presentation, and charter renewals, study action. Uh, again, these are just magnets, so.
And then there's things on your previous slide.
We also have a sustainability update, these are things that are not finalized, these things are things that folks have, folks, right? So what will happen is, between August 22nd and December 31st, a lot of things are gonna happen, right? So this could change, could adjust, every meeting has the opportunity to say, hey, I want for us to consider this for future board meetings, right? So we'll take all that information, we'll take all of this, and we'll scope out the spring, like, I'm scoping out for fall now.
Rob, you all have some things that you were, um.
Yeah.
On, on the previous slide that were on the to-do list for the spring as well, so could presumably some of those things also be fun?
Yeah, yeah, again, like I said, like, I'll have to add those magnets, and I'll put them on here once today's meeting is done.
Right. But if folks were looking for somebody to plug in on that late night.
I, I'd ask that you not look at this yet, it's just for me and Laura to kind of figure out the key track of, so we're not, like, buying more names.
Okay.
A budget, that's right, there's always a budget implication. So, Rob, where would, so we're part of an accountability grant, and we're talking school performance frameworks, could we fit something in around accountability, to Richard's point, update earlier on since we've done the work, and I'm just wondering?
That's gonna dance, you see, that got a little.
Yeah, you know, I'm trying.
Worm dance.
It's my superpower. Um, I'm trying to think whether it would work there or whether it would work here.
The question, the answer is yes?
Yeah, Laura, make a note, the strategic plan metrics update or school performance frameworks, we need to talk about the, the accountability grant and kind of give an update on that, you could do that. Um, and then, we also, you, you would ask for that conversation, maybe here, you would ask for that conversation, Kathy, on, well, everybody kinda asked on this, this kind of, that, how do we, how do we know and understand what folks are advocating for and where we are on that, like a, like a, I don't know what we would call that topic, but that's plenty of time to do that.
Like, alright.
As a reminder, we talked about this idea of, you've got Equity Council who's asking us to do things, you've got all of these groups who are asking us to do things, where we are with their recommendations, how their recommendations, how we empower them, how we listen, what do we co-create, what are the problems that still exist, what are we doing there?
You're backing that for.
Well, that would be, we have a space, and that's, that's an hour conversation.
That's a good idea, I see nodding.
Is that okay? So, all right, well, listen, if it's on the writing on the magnet, that makes it like happen, and then, what do we wanna call that? We'll call it.
Call it like committee feedback or something, or committee communication.
Other ideas?
Okay, he's like, I don't like that.
Well, I don't know, I was looking around, I didn't hear it yet, I'm looking for a second.
I might not be calling a closing the loop regarding advisory councils, et cetera.
It's not even on that wall.
How about advisory council upgrade?
Sure, yeah, that's great. No, wait, no. Crowdsourcing magnet words.
See, I knew we were gonna find something for that.
Be awesome. But you had your hand up, was it, did that get to where you're going, or somewhere else?
Um, I was able to, went to find the answer.
Fantastic.
If you can, if you're able to, it's gonna expand in real life.
Okay.
I foresee no extra charge for the free vision tab included in your, in, in your general admission to the line.
The board has to be small enough that I could sit in my office.
Uh, fair enough, yeah. I think I told you about the way the Boulder City Council does this, on giant sticky notes that go all the way around the room with a, a piece of chart paper per meeting, and then they just move giant sticky notes around the room, and it's amazing. But it takes a whole room, it's hilarious. I'm like, really? Okay? Like a game show. It kinda looks like it could get another really colorful, colored by department, it's a whole thing.
That's amazing. I texted Kathy about this yesterday, and just, like, kinda, this is a very specific logistical question. Do we have a plan for December 3rd? My understanding is, of course, that we're probably going to be at the convention. I enrolled my daughter in a theater class, and it looks like they're performing December 3rd, so I un-enrolled her. It's fine, it's not the end of the world, I just wanna understand, like, what our plan is for December, for, like, what the, what.
Do you want to have a board retreat, Kathy?
I think we should, honestly. I know I'm, like, all about the retreats apparently, but I, I think it's, I think it's important, because I think it's easy to be disconnected.
Why don't we do this, why don't we wait to have that conversation after we do kind Why don't we do this, why don't we wait to have that conversation after we do kind of our more genetic checkup, because there may be a follow-up you'd want to do, and then I think that we would discuss, I'm going to be there, like, I'm happy, we can, we can facilitate, Kathleen and I will both be there, we can facilitate a retreat if that's the will of the board, you see that we have it here, so to the extent that we know when that's going to happen, typically, we decide that based on people's availability during that time, because some folks have different obligations, responsibilities, tasks, and so on and so forth. So, I won't know the answer to that, because we do our retreat, do we want a retreat? Yes. When are people available? Yes, and then we'll iron it out.
I have a question, it's kind of more related to logistics and not specific items, but I wonder, for some of the items that we discuss or receive presentations on, there's lots of duplicative information, and some of it we could read, just as well as we could sit through, if it's not something we're acting on or will never act on, and I, I wonder if that's just an opportunity for us to think of when we don't want our meetings to be too long and too busy, can we think about some line items differently than others, and how the board receives that information to use our time well?
Retreat conversation is going to come up.
Well, we can, so we totally can. Again, you know, the, the guiding rules for, for my team, and sometimes they don't follow it, sometimes, because, for good reasons, is twelve slides, twenty, twenty-five minutes, to allow for ten, fifteen minutes of question, answer, clarification, that's, that's right, Kathleen, that's what we kind of say.
Yeah.
And then, I see every presentation before comes to you all, and then I'm always like, that's two slides, like, twelve slides, like, you know, but, but you've got to remember, for some of these people, this is their only time to tell you and the public about what they do, they're excited, they create more depth, but the more clarity that you all collectively can provide for me, right? It just means that everybody has to do their pre-reading, everybody has to, right, you know, I mean, and that's probably retreat conversation as well, to the extent that our collective expectation is we do pre-reading, if you have questions, you let me know the questions ahead of time, so we can be prepared to answer the questions that you have, some that you may want to ask publicly, so folks know that you're, what you're thinking, right? We can be more efficient, the more information we have ahead of time. When we hear things, right, out of blue, or you have some questions that I haven't had a chance to consider, those sometimes take more time in public, but if meeting time is something, and meeting efficiency is something that we want to discuss, we can totally dial it on.
Were you ready to add anything?
I was going to bring up the time limit thing, even when we have our advisory groups come, it'd be really helpful if they had some kind of guideline as to how long they have to present, I think that would be really helpful, not just you're coming to present, and then not giving them any kind of guideline.
Laura, do you write that down?
I am.
And, and we've done this in the past. You know, we give guidelines, sometimes folks follow, sometimes folks, but we can, but there's ways we can clearly articulate, because we have this amount of time to talk about this, you know, just like we give to public speakers or whatever, we can totally.
And by guideline, I don't mean an hour, I mean, like, half an hour or less, maybe even fifteen minutes in some cases, like, there's no reason we, to Nicole's point, we don't have to sit there for a half an hour listening to stuff that we could actually read, or look at a graph or something.
Among the things we're talking about is, that might be true for you, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's true for everyone, so we don't figure out what are your shared expectations and needs around that, so that people who need that, that prefer the long verbal delivery, we figure out what to do about it if there are some.
I, I totally agree with that, however, if we let every single group that comes to present to us an hour, it's, it's unsustainable, you can't do that, yeah.
That's right, and I think we also miss out on all the things we want to do, because we're spending an hour on something that's of minimal interest.
Right. Likewise. So, by guideline, I mean, so, before we leave this, my question is, was there anything that was a burning topic priority for anyone on the board for conversation in the fall that you don't see somewhere addressed here? And so now would be the time to raise that.
Mine are a lot of policies, so I'm excited to see Kathleen's, and I'm really hoping for J E C C before October eighteenth.
You leaned on it.
So, last question, has everybody felt like they've been heard through the process at the beginning? That would be the time to tell.
Which includes, I said a thing in a meeting four months ago, that someone said, yeah, 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 we'll write it down, and you saw that pop up somewhere here, it's not just that you feel heard today, but it is a process that largely works for, I have confidence that if I mention a thing, there's somehow a through line into the board work plan and the conversation.
I have a question. So we're going to, I think, change the way we provide our funding through our mill levy to our charters, which we talked about in the spring, because we're doing the differentiated funding. Will we be, do we need to do a policy change, is it just going to come up through contract? What are, how are we going to do that?
Well, I mean, that was a, that was a conversation topic that came up, but we did not get direction that that's what we were going to do collectively, but I think that what you're asking is, how would we, if, if that's what we want to do, how do we change policy, how do we change direction, so then that would give staff the direction that we need to implement in that regard.
I thought we were, with the contracts, we were going to change that contract language. They were two of our schools that would not be impacted by it as much, so I just don't want, I, I'm just curious about what that would look like.
We did, in the most recent charter contracts in Boulder Prep and Justice, which still will come back to the board, you saw the draft, we did change, significantly change, the funding provisions in that contract. I don't know that we go into any great detail on differentiated funding in those contracts, but we pulled them back to match the board's policy on mill levy sharing, so that then you can update that policy language.
Because we're not really, the mill levy sharing language is old, it doesn't reflect our change to differentiated funding.
That's what we need to update.
Okay.
So it would be, then you would address, that would be the policy that then would drive as we negotiate the contracts, that would give us the direction we need.
So, I, just I'm curious about timing, because I'm not sure charter contracts under pending gets to that, or maybe it does, I don't know.
Can I have overnight to look at everything, and then I'll integrate that into the policy review discussion?
I just want to add one thing that I'm thinking about, yeah, I think this is a great process, and I feel heard, but something that came, came to my mind when I was sitting here, thinking about your question, Heather, was, at several of our meetings with the teachers in the community, which I think were great, our lunches with the teachers were awesome, several teachers brought up mental health needs for themselves and the students, and I feel like this is certainly up here, but I'm just hoping we can find a place to kind of point to that, it may be part of restorative justice, it may be part of MTSS, but I just want to give us a chance to make sure we kind of close that particular loop, if that makes sense.
And I want to, we spoke to, spoke to it a bit in the spring with our presentation to you, Paul, why don't we put that down, Laura, as a, just a reminder, as we're thinking about addressing the social, emotional, and mental wellness needs of our students, that we keep that top of mind, with the idea that we can always think about bringing back something formal in the spring, right? And I think that, you know, it, it gives folks a year to give you new information, here's what happened, here's the investments that you all approved in the budget that are now there, that were additional mental health resources, here's how they're working.
Are we going to get an update on it, are we going to address it, we're getting, I'm just curious if that fits in there somewhere, kind of our explanation as to how we are where we are?
Yeah, yeah, my plan, well, my, my plan was to talk about that tomorrow in superintendent comments, right, as a reminder, board members, and I know that we're getting emails around the base pay of one hundred and fifteen dollars. We approved in the budget this idea of surge pricing, so we increase our pay based on need, right? Like, that's the, what we do approve in the budget. The idea being, there are going to be times where we're going to have to pay more to get the sub coverage, and that we may be incurring costs different than other districts based on our contract that you also approved with BVEA, which allows teachers in our district to get paid out on annual basis for their unused vacation days. So, to raise our sub rate five dollars is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for every five dollars. So, we've gone up ten, like, dollars over the course of the past year, with the idea that we supplement that with one-time money with surge pricing, dollars for substitutes, and then continue to catch up, right? So what I've been sharing, as folks have emailed me, because they see the base pay, and they assume that that's all we're going to pay, I've said, as need increases, our pay will be incredibly competitive, right? And then the response is back, well, we'll wait to, you know, from the, from the five people after, from, we'll wait, looks incredibly competitive, to stop something, right? You know, we don't have, we, so, so in any event, I, I will speak to that publicly in superintendent comments tomorrow.
So, we may have voted on those things, Rob, but I don't know that we tied them all together the way you just did, so I think it's important.
I'll talk about it tomorrow. So, there we go.
But again, I, again, the comment theme that I've heard today is, maybe we need some better system for capturing what we've decided and how we all track that, I think, who said board docs is there, but it's, it's hard to find stuff in there to figure out what we agreed to when, it's impossible, so maybe there's some conversation about that as well.
Some conversations beyond what we already have, which is, you can always text me with a question, I can always call me, I'm available almost twenty-four seven, and I respond really quickly, so.
Yeah, what time do you go to the, right?
So, any minute, okay, all right, so.
I just have one more question. Last year, we talked about a more regular rhythm with how we were doing the strategic plan, but I see it once up there, other items are loosely associated with our strategic plan, the one, how our employee's doing is part of our strategic plan, so is, are we thinking every, like, twice a year, an update on the strategic plan and certain outcomes? I was just wondering, what does that look like when we discussed regular updates?
I think it depends upon, so, so some of this is set by staff, like, so I also go to staff, because these are the things we're thinking about, how much time do you need before you can present something sustainable? So, being aligned to strategic plan, right, we've got the strategic plan update, we have the grad plus update, we have bilingual education, right, update here, we have A R O I, we have strategic partnerships, we have strategic plan metrics, so it's not like a, I'm going to set it this date, and then it's like, just an update on whatever's happening, I try to embed that throughout the course of the semester. So I can trade, I can, to make that more clear, I can just call everything strategic plan update, colon, strategic plan metrics, strategic plan update, colon, in what aspect, if that, if that creates more clarity for folks.
Notting, sure. It wouldn't hurt.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's fair.
Cool. All right, anything else?
Okay.
All right, great.
Good.
So, good to hear.
Oh, and there's a bond.
Oh, there's another little thing going on.
And we've got new HR director, new chief information officer, new executive director for schools in the, so, coaching, developing, Kathleen's got a whole new team outside of lives, and communications has a pretty new team with some of the, of the folks that are there, so all of that is also part of what I'll be doing, is growing, developing, clarifying.
We want to do energy.
Lot of new energy, well, a lot of exciting things, lots to celebrate, so, all right, everybody feels okay? Feels good?
Great.
Laura, you feel okay, you've got all the information we need? Okay, we'll have to work on the pending category, we have to think about, put on cabinet agenda, that this conversation that we're going to have, the advisory council update on September twenty seventh, so we can plan for that, that would be, I think we're going to have to do some work there, and, and then just let's make sure we're on track to get the board what they need for that conversation on September thirteenth for the pre-reduced lunch conversation, and then Kathleen, I know is absorbed at all, she's going to have a brilliant policy, board policy, topic conversation planned by tomorrow, so, there we go, all right.
All right, so, we need to do a quick computer changeover, so if you want to take five, need whatever biological, social, or up close looking at the board needs you might have, please feel free. Kathleen, you're free to stay, but we don't need you, so if you have a pamphlet, maybe a slide deck prepared, that's fine, too.
I should, I got it now. So, yeah, you go.